Temple City Unified School District Board of Education to order for Wednesday, September 8. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and take roll call. Member Espinoza?
Here.
Member Georgino?
Here.
A member Lynn?
Here.
I'm here and members Sneed?
Here.
Okay, so all five are present. Next item on our agenda, item three.
Did we lose Matt?
Looks that way.
Oh no!
Oops.
Yes, we lost him.
Oh dear.
Vanessa, you ready to take over?
Here he goes.
He's coming back.
He's coming back.
I was getting ready. I was like, okay, where are we? We're on three. There we go.
Sorry, I had something pop up and it kind of took over my computer. Anyway, we are on three public comment on closed agenda items. I have no requests. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and call for motion adjourned to closed session. And tonight, we will discuss the matters under government code 54957, conference with labor negotiators under government code 54957.6, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation pursuant to government code 54956.9, subdivision D2, and then another legal conference with our legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation under government code 54956.9, subdivision D4. So with that, can I have a motion and adjourn to closed session, please? See, a motion from member Lynn, a second from member Sneed, and I'm going to go ahead and call for the vote. Member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Members Sneed?
Yes.
And member Espinoza?
Yes.
Okay, we are now off to closed session. Thank you.
嗯。
Hi, how are you?
Hey, everybody.
Hi.
I was like, I only saw three. I was like, Kristy Taylor is here. Like, I thought you were the only one, Kristy. I didn't realize there was a whole panel of people.
They're all here, Richard. Nice to see you.
Good to see you, too. Hi, Anthony. How are you?
Hey, Richard. Kind of miss you around here.
A little bit. I do miss the high school a lot.
Hi, Mary.
I unmute myself. How did your back-to-school night go last night, Kristy?
It went really well, and thank you to Donna who showed up. I didn't, I was, all the names were coming in, and so I noticed Donna came in. So I'm so thankful for the board popping in and saying hi to us, but it went really well. It was nice.
I had a foundation meeting last night, so kind of at the same time.
That was hard. Too many meetings.
This is one of those weeks, a lot of them, yeah.
Oh, no.
Mr. Garcia, you're still in your classroom.
Yes, I am. Such is the day of an athletic trainer. Football practice just finished about twenty minutes ago.
The kiddos need you, Mr. Garcia. The kiddos need you.
Sometimes I want to crawl and hide somewhere.
Well, I was an athletic trainer in college, so I know exactly how you feel, and you do an incredible service for all of our students and to keep them healthy.
You were an athletic trainer? Seriously?
I was an athletic trainer at college, yeah, for the hockey team. It's not so great.
For ice hockey?
Ice hockey, yeah. Ice hockey.
Oh, I lived in Massachusetts for six years. I was the head trainer of UMass Dartmouth before I switched over to professional sports. I love ice hockey. I tell you what, it's my favorite sport of all time. Those boys are absolutely nuts.
They are crazy. They are crazy. Because I grew up in Michigan, so you were literally on skates by the age of two. If you were not, like, you were doomed for the rest of your life. You were never going to succeed in life if you could not skate by the age of two.
I still got my blades.
I do, too. I do, too.
My son's a transplant to Detroit. Should I tell him to get skates or?
Yes.
He's over two.
Yes, get him skates.
He did buy a snow blower after five years.
He, he's a native now.
He got tired of shoveling the snow.
Oh, my gosh.
It took my son a couple of years, too, to figure it out in Wisconsin that snow blowers were definitely the way to go.
Well, it's either that or not get out of their driveway.
Okay, everybody, I show that it's exactly seven o'clock, so I'd like to go ahead and call for a motion to reconvene to open session. We have a motion and a second, please. Motion from Member Lynn and a second from Member Georgino. And I'm going to do a real call vote. Member Espinosa?
Yes.
Uh, Member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
I'm a yes and member Sneed?
Yes.
Okay, so the vote is five zero, and we are now back into open session. With that, we are on to item seven, announcement. Tonight's meeting is being digitally recorded, so I want to make sure everybody knows that, although you should. And then we'll move on to the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Members Sneed tonight. Mary, why not give us a start?
I'm going to ask a former student of mine, Jasmine. Could you lead us in the flag salute tonight?
Yes, sorry. I like that a little bit. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Jasmine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jasmine. Okay, with that, we are on to item ten, announcement of actions taken in closed session. If any, there's no announcements to make. We took no action. And with that, I haven't heard about any interest in postponing or changing the agenda, so I'm going to assume everyone's good with it. And then I would like to get a motion and a second to approve the agenda, as is. Motion for Member Georgino and a second for Member Lynn. Oops. And I'm going to go call for the vote, starting first with Student Board Member Kiana Lee. Kiana, what's your preferential vote tonight?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Member Lynn?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Espinosa?
Yes.
And Member Georgino?
Yes.
Okay, so we are on with the agenda, and the vote carries five zero. We are now on to item number twelve, special recognition tonight about the Temple City High School Skills USA program. And gather, Mr. Garcia and Ms. Lee will be presenting tonight.
Good evening. I wanted to highlight our group that went to Skills USA to compete this past year. But beyond just this group, I think our students have been so resilient in order to still compete in so many different competitions, even though they were in distance learning. So to me, having our students still compete in speech tournaments and other competitions online, I think speaks volumes to what kind of students are at Temple City High School. And with that, I would love to introduce, we have two of our kiddos here today. We have Jasmine Lamb, and we also have Elaine Chu. And then we also have two that have graduated already this past June, and so I, we, we did try to reach out to them, but they might be at college. So not, that's probably why they're not here. So I'll be sharing my screen while Anthony speaks so that you can see some of the results of their competition. And I'll let Anthony also talk about the Skills USA.
Hello, everyone. Hi, I'm Anthony Garcia. I'm the Athletic Trainer, Sports Medicine Teacher, and the humble advisor for Skills USA. I can't say enough about these kids. They've, they've worked, what can you say? They worked their butts off, especially during a COVID year. And can you see the screen at all?
No.
No?
Well, right now, it's, it's opening.
Okay.
We're looking at a launch meeting screen.
That's because my Microsoft PowerPoint is opening as you speak.
Well, I'll just continue. I got here four years ago. This is my fifth year here, and one of the stipulations for me coming here is that they would start the Skills USA program, because that's a program that was dear to my heart at the other school. And it started small. When I say small, in, in numbers, not in the ability of the students. It started small in numbers with only 21 students, and that was the first year. In that first year, 14 students made it to the state championships, and they won three, three state titles. And of the 14 kids, 13 of them actually made it, ended up on the podium receiving medals. So that's good for the first year. The second year, it got bigger. It went all the way up to 70 students. Oh, there it is. Okay. If you can go to the next slide, please. In the academic year, you know, TCA, Temple City High School joint, Skills USA, which is a CTSO, Career Technical Student Organization. It's not just a club, but it's an actual national organization with over 30,000 members here in the state of California alone. So it's, it's a huge organization. Next slide, please. 21 students the first year, working, volunteering at food banks, performing charity work as part of the stipulations of Skills USA, that they go out and do something in the community to reach out and make things better. Of those 21 students, and they competed in seven different categories, what I was most impressed about was our nursing program that finished in our Los Angeles Regionals, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and seventh. They really just killed it. And we ended up with a state champion that year. Next slide, please. In 2018, the next year, our numbers grew to 76 students. Again, all competing, and we doubled the number of categories to 14 different medical categories. Ms. Kidd joined in at four different categories. And Mr. Borjelli's joined in in carpentry in four different categories as well. 55 of our students advanced to the state finals. And three, we had three state champions. And of those 55 students, 23 ended up on the podium in first, second, or third. So that program just keeps on growing. And Ms. Kidd actually finished second in the nation in t-shirt design, and that individual, that student, actually got a job offer from that competition. She actually received a job offer while we were in Kentucky. I remember watching the whole transaction go on. They, they wanted her to move to Kentucky because she was so good at what she did. Next slide, please. Uh, this past year, okay. 128 students joined, 16 competitive events, 35 medalists, 10 regional champions. It was an incredible year, incredible year, but it stopped there because of the pandemic. There was no state championships. I was looking at a windfall for us. I didn't expect that this year would be it. So, next slide, please. We went down in numbers because of the pandemic. 55 students joined a virtual competition. 46 of those advanced to the state finals, all virtual, which is so hard to do, because in the medical category, you have to present all this medical detail. You have to show your knowledge, not just in person, on paper, but you have to demonstrate it, and it's hard to do in a virtual setting. Of those 55 students, 46 advanced to the state. Forty of those 46 made it to the top three and medaled. And we ended up with five state champions, and 10 of those, 10 of those, I'm sorry, some of those competitions were team competitions. So 10 students made it to the virtual national finals. Next slide, please. And I have to quote Vin Scully, one of my favorites. I actually met Vin when I was with the Dodgers. Okay, "In the year of the improbable, the impossible has happened." Next slide, please. Two national championships, an amazing feat. I was so thrilled. I was so unbelievable. I was, I was watching it live on, on my, my computer and TV screen. It was amazing, amazing. Elaine Chu won for basic healthcare skills. A single competition, one-on-one. Now, if you think about it, these are all the state champions she's going up against. So Elaine Chu won the state championship. She has to go up all, against all the state winners across the country. And she came up number one. She won a national title in occupational health and safety, which was a team championship. That was Clarissa Hong, Jasmine Lamb, who is here, and Irene Wong. They too ended up number one in the country in the national championship. By the way, I have to add this. Jasmine Lamb was selected this year to be the student president of the State of California for Skills USA. She represents the entire state of California for all students. She represents the entire state of California for all students. So she was elected that and I'm incredibly happy with that. And this is the banner that's hanging in our hallway. Skills USA National Champions, Temple City High School, and the two categories for twenty twenty one. So. I can't be happier, you know, and there's, I think. Elaine. I try to connect this. Nope, it didn't work.
No, but I can play it here.
Okay.
You good?
Hi, I'm Elaine and I'm the twenty twenty Skills USA National Champion for the category basic healthcare skills. And what it means to me to be the Temple City High School and State of California representative is. Wow, that it's a huge honor for me and I honestly didn't think I'd get this far. And I have to thank people like Mr. Garcia. I definitely could not have accomplished this without him. And the support of my parents and my friends and yeah, I. I'm glad that all the work and effort and time I paid for this competition. Has paid off in a big way and. I'm just. I'm proud.
Your guys, your medals have come in. The banner should be in shortly. You can pick them up in my office in the classroom. Hopefully very, very soon. I got the form that I have to fill out. They will be here shortly. So your medals are here. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Garcia?
I don't have a question, but I just wanted to add that I did not submit a video, but I just wanted to say something really short. So I just want to say thank you to Mr. Garcia for being a very, very helpful advisor and very supportive advisor. Because during the virtual year, I was competing and I was very sad that the previous year I could not go to state. But despite that, he still encouraged me to, yes, we love Mr. Garcia. He still encouraged me to compete and he provided me a lot of advice on how to become a better competitor. Especially like for my event, we had to compete in terms of giving a speech and creating a whole book. So creating that book was very stressful because we had a lot of changes to the rules. But despite that, he gave a lot of advice and we had like twelve AM, eleven PM like. Calls with him about like how to improve and everything. So. I'm very thankful that he was able to answer all of my calls and. Give me all that advice and especially when I applied to become a state officer for Skills USA. I did not expect to be elected as president, but he was very encouraging and he. Helped me through the process, even though it was very late. I only had a couple days to submit it because. I did not expect the deadline to be so early, but he still went out of his, he went, he went out of his way to. Still mail the application like at the post office and it was like, I can tell it was just a lot. For us to handle, but we still did it anyway. And then, yeah, now I'm here. So I'm just very grateful that. We're able to experience all this despite the pandemic.
And we're thrilled you're here too. Congratulations Jasmine.
We're just so proud of all of you. My. My goodness, I just, it's thrilling to see you go so far with this and. Temple City is all very, very proud of all of you.
I have to warn you guys, there is a world championship. I'm aiming for the higher bar now.
Where is world championship?
It's only held every, every two or three years. Last year. It's supposed, was supposed to be last year was going to be held in Badai, the Badair. In, in, what's that city in the? Far East. Dubai, there it is. It was supposed to be held there. And only if the categories were available where it could be actually managed in all these different languages. So maybe not in the medical category, but maybe woodworking, who knows?
Oh, I wanted to ask a question. In a, a normal year, are there opportunities for people to go and watch the competitions?
Yes, yes. In the regionals, they allow spectators and the state championships, which typically are held in Ontario. Which is, you know, just a short hop away. You are allowed to watch the whole competition. Even in, in the woodworking, they, they allow you to actually see it as it happens.
So I have been able to attend at once when it was at PCC and then also when it was in Ontario and it was a really great experience. To see our, our kids in action. When Elias took his kids, they were actually working out of the PCC woodworking. Classroom and so it was kind of neat to see what kind of materials and equipment a city college has. And as opposed to ours, which I, I think ours is pretty awesome. In comparison and, but also to see the kids compete in the Health Knowledge Bowl and, you know, it's just exciting. Yeah, and you can see the award ceremony too.
I, I have to say in Health Knowledge Bowl, which we actually this year in the national championships came in third, the highest we've ever done. We are the defending California state championships for the past. Three cycles. We, we haven't lost since I got here, so I'm, I'm expecting them to be the next ones. I'm, I'm setting the bar really high for those ones. So you can tell I'm a proud parent here.
And rightly so. Nicely done.
If we ever get to go in person again, I would, I think it'd be great if any of our school board members came. It's just fun to see. Cause they're all dressed in their red jackets or their, you know, and they look very smart. Oh, kind of like.
There she is in her jacket, Jasmine.
That would be a lot of fun. That would be great.
Yeah, you just got to put this around your neck Jasmine.
I have two from my previous years here. I'm very proud of it.
This was just a tad bigger.
Just a little bit.
All right.
Sorry. I feel like I should say something to thank Mr. Garcia also because. Last year during virtual school, it was really, it was really difficult. I was juggling five online AP classes. In addition to leading other clubs and I honestly felt like. Skills USA was a drain, like it was a bit of a burden because I had to keep up with my study schedule that I set for myself. And especially because I was in a single competition. It was hard for me to ask any questions to people who were like competing in the same category as me because they were all my competitors. So that's where Mr. Garcia came in and he provided a lot of material for me to review. And also he stayed behind after school with me for several. For several days to review like how to take blood pressure and taking height and weight, proper hand washing technique, which is. Very helpful during COVID and I just want to thank him again because. I really not have gone through with this motivation and like pushed through the last bit and gave. That last bit of effort to have this payoff. So thank you.
Thank you. And it's very nice of you to say that.
Thank you Elaine. You guys should have seen Elaine when she won. They announced her as the winner. She jumped out of her seat. Her parents, she went crazy. It was, it was a great scene. I loved it.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and move along. So the next item on our agenda. Is public comment on genderized items and non genderized items. And I do have one request that I've received in writing. And this is from Sri Baraha Harajan, I believe his name is pronounced. And it says, hello, many thanks for the hard work that the board and staff are doing on a day to day basis and for keeping everyone safe. I sincerely wish the board and the superintendent start reporting on teacher and staff immunizations and the progress of such vaccinations. As a concerned parent, I would like the board to make sure that unvaccinated staff are nowhere near children. Also, it would be beneficial for parents like us who cannot visit the classrooms to see pictures of the students. And teachers with their masks on in the classroom, highlight social distancing and other measures such as frequent hand washing. Thank you. And again, it's from Sri Baradhar Ajahn. Okay. So with that, we are on to community updates by the board president. I don't really have any new updates. I do know that the. Temple City Relay for Life program is still scheduled from November sixth and they're expecting to have it. And there are lots of activities around that that you'll be hearing about in the next few weeks. So just a reminder on that. And then we're going to move on to district updates, starting first with business services and Dr. Fricker Kim.
Hi, good evening. So first of all, I just want to thank Alexa, who is the director of this, so she has been doing an incredible job. At closing our books and doing the year and un-audited actuals. She will be doing a report a little bit later on in the evening. But thank you to her and her team for all of the work that they are doing. Thank you also to payroll for making sure that that always runs through. They have been impeccable throughout the. Distance learning process last year and then going into this year. So thank you to all of those folks. And then on to, we're finalizing the shade structures. They're almost done. We're waiting for a couple of the DSA. Sessions to close out and then they will be complete. The, the shade structures across the campuses look fantastic. They are, they're big and they're beautiful. They're all representative of the school colors and so. Anthony Salazar and his team did an incredible job and making sure that all of the work. Was done putting up those shade structures. What most people don't know about that is that. When going through the DSA process, we also had to upgrade much of our lighting. Especially where those shade structures were going to be put in place. So the campuses did get upgrades in lighting as well. And then I know that we are working on HVAC systems in, in terms of the air conditioning units. The HVAC is working properly at all of our campuses. Those have been inspected. Some of the AC units. Have been temporarily out and so untimely, but due to just delays of getting the product in to repair those units. Cause some delay for our school sites, but those are on its way and in and done in some cases and we're just finalizing. Anthony and his team are finalizing the rest of those coolant units and making sure that they are operable as soon as he possibly can. So. There is an update with that and that is it for the CBO report.
Great, thank you, Kim. We're going to move on now to educational services and Richard Lohman. Richard, what do you have to share?
Thank you, Mr. Smith. So we continue to work to form a deeper, deeper implementation of our PBS across the district. We're working with Laco and Laco is allowing us to develop unique trainings that reflect the needs and culture of Temple City, which is great. I want to thank you, I want to send a thank you to Monica Lukesh. Her passion is really driving the program, so much appreciation on that one. Reflex and, and Frax math is being looked at to support our elementary students in mastering math facts. Again, thank you Amy Gerling for taking the lead on this and working with our sites to bring it across all our sites. We continue to build upon the message from our keynote speaker, Richard Smith from Solution Tree. He was the gentleman who spoke at our back to school breakfast. And we're built, as we build our PLCs across all sites. Amy Gerling and Scott Sherman will continue to work with the sites as we build these robust teams that are going to support our students. Canvas and our head tech is up and running for all sites, including the virtual academy. Huge thank you to Carrie Smith and all the head services for the hours of work they put, put in to get us here. I know Susan Hemmons is on the line somewhere. Thanks to her team, like all this is up and running now. English Language Proficiency Assessment of California, this is the LPAC or we call it the LPAC. No one is ever saying that long name. Is taking place. The test is administered as an initial assessment to newly enrolled students whose primary language is not English. As indicated on their home language survey and is annually as a summative assessment to students who have been previously identified as EL students. And I have to send a thank you out to Chris Holmes for all the legwork he's done on this one, but also for our site ELD coordinators. Who continue to work with Chris to get all of our kids tested. And finally, as we continue, as I continue to work on the LCAP revisions that we talked about last time we were here. As well as the CCAS report, I wanted to commend the dedication professionalism of our staff, but also the staff who works at. Laco and the, and CDE. As a site principal, as a site AP and as a teacher, when you heard people from Laco and CDE, it was kind of scary and like, and I got you. When you spoke with them, these people are amazing, like they have supported us. They've supported me inside and out. So I want to send a thank you out to our staff as well as those who work with Laco and the California Department of Ed who support us. And that's the end of my report.
Very good. Thank you, Richard. We're going to move on now to personnel services and Dr. Tamara Kataroyan. Tamara, what do you have to share?
Thank you, President Smith. I would like to start with thank you to all of our teachers and our classified staff. For an incredible job with the opening of schools and I want to piggyback that on to our administrators who held down the fort. And put down the pillars and made sure that we were on a successful path. So incredible job. The first two weeks were not easy, but you guys made it through like you always do. So thank you for that. We are still in the hiring, we're, we're in the midst of hiring season still. All around from administrators to teachers to substitutes to aides. It is, it is, it is ongoing. So we are still continuing on that. We've brought on some really good positions and we are hopeful that we are closing the gap on the ones that we have currently flying and open. We are looking for qualified people, so we're being a little bit picky, but in the end of the day, we want good people in our district. And we want to make sure that we have the right fit and the quality that we want for our students. Open enrollment for benefits has started already, so that's underway. The assignment monitoring for CTC is underway and almost complete. The EEOC, the fancy words, the US Equal Employment Opportunity Commission Report for two thousand twenty. Is underway and almost complete. These are all the fancy reports that we turn into state and local officials that are due. And then all our administrators, new and current, have been trained on the Helios system, which is, that's our new PTR system, the paperless system. So that, that is the updates for personnel.
Hey, thank you, Tamara. Moving on now to student services, Christopher Holmes. Chris, what do you have for us?
Thank you, President Smith. And again, thank you to Dr. Fricker, Dr. Kataroyan and the entire board. And, and Mr. Lohman for all the support I've received in my first few weeks here on the job as Director of Student Services. It's been such an honor and a privilege to start to meet people from this seat and see all the great work that's happening. In our district in Temple City. Prior to the beginning of the school year, in the past few weeks, we've been working very hard to make sure that all of our students, approximately fifty five hundred students in our district. Have been properly placed and are accessing their education. I thought the start of the school year. At the sites went amazingly well and has been going amazingly well. The effort on the part of our. Site, our teachers, our custodians, our clerical staff, our aides and our site administrators. Has just been amazing. I've visited each of the campuses, trying to be there to be supportive and they're just doing a great job and. Back to in-person learning and witnessing students on campus and all the effort, knowing all the effort that's gone into it has been inspiring. I want to personally thank my new team. A lot of the members of our teams overlap with other areas. But I work very closely with Cindy Ayala, Sylvia Mock, Carrie Smith. And Gina Campieri and the amount of hours and effort and work that went into making sure that we were ready this year. With those different platforms that Mr. Lohman mentioned. It was so impressive for us to be able to make sure that our school year started smoothly. One of our areas of focus now is the fact that we do have a virtual academy. And we want to make sure through our enrollment process and through those other areas that Mr. Lohman referenced. That our students are able to access their education and when the decision by family is made to transition. That we can make that transition as smooth as possible when they're going to move back from the virtual academy to in-person learning. And so. There's a lot of effort going in right now to make sure that our processes are in place to support those families and those students when they make that, that make that move. As we continue forward this year, I'll have more updates in the various areas of student services. But just once again, thank you Temple City Unified School Board, all the members of the board and. For all of your support and helping us roll out what I feel is a very successful start to the school year.
Great, thank you, Chris. Very much appreciated. With that, we're going to move on to our new executive director of technology, Susan Heeman. Susan, what do you have to share?
You know, when you, when you go last, some of your thunder has already been taken. So, you know, it's okay though. You know, I feel like it's, it's been a whirlwind as trying to get the virtual academy up and running. As part of my job. And it, it's been fantastic because the teachers that have come together, both from secondary and elementary. Didn't necessarily work together last year. They came from different schools, whether it's different elementary schools. Different departments at the high school from Oak. And so it's really been a fun, fun group of people getting to know them. And getting to see how they've worked together as a team, because without our team, we would not have been able to get things rolling for kids. So it's been a challenge and rewarding at the same time. So I think we've offered what our parents were asking for. They wanted certificated people in the classrooms with their kids, even though they are virtual. And I feel like we've been able to support them on that. As far as people to thank, I mean, again, I think probably I've worked the closest with Gina Campari. We see each other via phone umpteen times a day and, and we've both learned a lot in the process. We've got about 125 secondary virtual students and we've got about 440, give or take, it changes from day to day, elementary students that we're serving. So I think we're able to offer our community the services and the rigor that they wanted in a virtual school. As far as tech, I think everyone else has covered it. We're making headway and it's been quite an accomplishment by our whole team, whether it's from Andy Harper and his group of techs from our websites to getting the day-to-day and getting our software and everything up and running. So without that team, we, you know, I can't thank them enough for making my transition really well. And thank all of you and I'm excited to get to serve in this new position.
Great, thank you, Susan. Okay, with that, we're going to move on to Bargaining Unit Comments, starting first with TCEA. And Kristi Taylor will be pinch hitting for Tyler Girdsette tonight. Kristi?
Thank you, Mr. Smith and the board. I first of all, I want to thank all of the employees in Temple City for putting together a really great back to school. Campuses look great. It was just a great first day back. Thank you to all of the people that put together the breakfast. It's just, everything is opened and kids are excited to be back in school. So thank you for all of that work. I want to thank the Superintendent and our Cabinet for meeting with TCEA and helping us put together some really good MOUs, not only for in-person learning, but for our Virtual Academy. I want to thank the Temple City Schools Foundation for their gifts to teachers. We got those on that first day. I was a winner of the golden ticket, as were other members at my table. But thank you so much for doing that. Temple City Schools Foundation, I always appreciate your, your love for teachers and what you do for us. So thank you. I want to thank all of our teachers and our principals and support people that attended our back to school nights and teachers who put on back to school nights, even our board members who showed up. Your support means so much to us and parents felt good about hearing about their child's learning and the safety measures that were in place. So it was a really successful back to school night. I want to say a special thank you to Ruben and Johnny in Maintenance. We already had a playground structure that went down. It was a bouncy thing and those gentlemen were on it. And to the applause of my students, that it was up and running within a few days, they were able to tighten some bolts. And the kids were so thrilled that it was repaired so swiftly. So thank you to Ruben and Johnny. And lastly, I want to welcome all of our new employees, our new teachers to Temple City. I know this is my 20th year here and I love it and I so hope that they do too. So welcome to all of our new employees. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Kristi. Okay, we're going to move on now to TCEA Unit President, Robin Penn, for 105. Now, Robin, what do you have to share?
I really don't have, I can't follow Kristi. I mean, come on. So yeah, thank you, everybody. No, I will say that everyone is saying it was a great start to school. It was, but not without its bumps and speed bumps. But anyway, we got past all that. We're getting there. I love working with Tamara. Dr. Fricker is amazing. Richard has been awesome. I mean, he took care of a problem for me today that I just, I would have kissed him if I had been in the office with him. Chris has been with us at Emperor the last few days. It's been great. So we really appreciate the support and it's getting better every day. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Robin. And then moving on to CSCA 823, President Art Contreras. Art, what do you have to share?
Good evening. Just want to, don't have nothing really much. Just looking forward to negotiations. Letter was submitted to request the bargain. So hopefully we'll get that ball rolling and get it done soon and not be like last year where it took forever with all the stuff that was happening. But other than that, thank you, Kristi, for recognizing my members. Their hard work is always, always there. And these guys do go above and beyond and they get the job done. The recognition needs to be there and thank you for doing that. When I see them, I'll let them know, hey, you were on primetime Wednesday night and you got recognized. So we appreciate that. Other than that, that's all I have. Just stay vigilant. COVID's still out there, so everybody stay safe.
Great, thank you, Art. Okay, we are now on to Board Member Comments and we're going to start first time with Dr. Michael Lynn. Mike, what do you have to want to share?
Thanks for President Smith. I would like to start off by congratulating our High School Skills USA organization. They're more than a club, they're an organization. For three years of what appears to be meteoric success and for recently winning three state titles. That is extremely impressive. So I want to thank Mr. Anthony Garcia for your hard work. And to borrow a quote heard earlier, "In the year of the improbable, the impossible happened." And I would say, "All because of our incredible staff, outstanding students and amazing families." It's always a joy to hear about and see showcase of student success in the many programs that we offer in our school district. In each of our school board meetings, this truly puts the focus of our public board meetings always on our students. And I would also like to congratulate our schools for a successful reopening of schools for full-time in-person learning, while also offering a high-quality independent study program in the Virtual Academy option. I want to thank Dr. Fricker, the administrative team, teachers and the support staff for all your hard work. Thank you, and that is all for me.
Great, thanks, Mike. And I'm going to go ahead and go next. Again, congratulations to the Skills USA team for their wonderful accomplishments and with the direction of Anthony Garcia and Elena Lee, that's wonderful. And Elaine Shu to be California State President, basically representing our state is just wonderful. So it seems like it's certainly moving along very quickly, very well. I did attend a number of the back to school night Zoom videos. I didn't attend all of them, but the ones I attended were well-done. I thought the information presented was clear and it was exciting to feel like we were all getting back together again, even though it was virtually. As a district, we are continuing to evolve. Some of people have touched on it tonight. One example is that our Virtual Academy, which was composed of 517 students on opening day, is now almost 600, which is about 80, 80 student increase, which you think about it, it's three classrooms, three more classrooms. And I saw an email from Dr. Fricker sometime in the last couple of days. I'm sorry, I don't remember exactly when. But where she was talking about how that affects other students and other classes and whatnot. And anyway, I'm, I'm pleased to see that it's progressing like it is. I did also attend, have a chance to attend the ice cream socials for our new principals at La Rosa Longdon and the high school. It was a chance for the principals and staff there to get to know each other, kind of break the ice or the ice cream, I guess. And it was, it was a nice touch and I know we're going to do something similar elsewhere in the future. I have, I've been taking a look at all the newsletters that principals have sent out. I think that they're very nicely done. I did want to give a special shout out to Myra Rudell from Emperor, principal there. And something little extra she did, she read a book called What the Road Said and it was about a six-minute reading. But she posted that on their website so the kids could take a look at it. And it was very much in line and in order with what the district has been going through these past many, many, many months, trying to get everything settled down and the little bumps in the road that can sometimes throw you off a little bit. I also saw on Kim's newsletter, some congratulations are in order for Allison Lee, Annie Shi, Jay and Selena Yu, who took third, second, third and fourth place in a Upper San Gabriel, San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District Art Contest. So kudos to them. It says they are 10th graders, but I suspect that was last year and they're probably 11th graders this year. There were 117 entries from 12 different schools. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank the six individuals and organizations on behalf of the board and the district for the $4,294 they donated to various activities in the district. So with that, I am going to move along to Member Snee. Mary, what do you have for us?
Okay, thank you, President Smith. First, I want to thank all the employees who worked so hard throughout the summer to get the rooms ready, to get curriculum ready, just to get everything ready for us to reopen this fall. I think the saddest thing over the last year was seeing empty playgrounds. And to see kids back on playgrounds and kids back at the high school in Oak, it's just, it's what we're all about. And it seems like everything's right in our world now. Maybe not totally, but getting kids back on the playground is, is such a big step. But it was, it was great to see everybody back at the back to school breakfast. I think being away from each other for a year and a half, it was just what everybody needed to get back into the spirit of the school year. Dr. Fricker's speech and the speech from our guest, Richard Smith, really sent a tone that energized everybody there. I want to thank Mari Montgomery for all of her work and the work of her crew to organize such a great morning. And Tamara Kataroyan for helping us recognize all of our, our staff members. And I want to congratulate Mike Thomas Sulo for 40 years' service to our district. I mean, wow, that, he's a phenomenal person, a phenomenal teacher, phenomenal coach. And we've been so lucky for 40 years to have him here. Thank you also to the Skills USA for your presentation tonight. It's always great to hear about different programs that our students participate in and I really wish them lots of luck in the future. And it's, it's nice to see that they have for having such a wonderful opportunity for the students to participate in that and maybe give, lead them on a life's path. I was able to observe some of the back to school nights from La Rosa Oak, the DD SLC, the first night of Longdon's. It was, I really appreciated the fact that we were allowed to see some of their presentation and it was just nice to see the excitement about the teachers and the staff and the families that were, that were happy to be back. Last night, I was able to join the Temple City Ed Foundation for their meeting. That's why I wasn't quite able to see the Longdon second night, but I know it went great. I want to thank the foundation for all their, for supporting the district for so many years. I want to wish them well as they're moving through the process for their WASC accreditation. They're, they're at the beginning of the, of the journey. And I also encourage teachers to visit their foundation website to find out about some of their grant opportunities. There'll be more information on there. Congratulations to Temple City, 83.1% of residents are vaccinated. And our younger people, ages 12 to 17, 94.9% of those eligible are vaccinated. I believe Temple City is, last I had heard, we were second highest vaccination rate in the area. It could be higher than that by now. I'm not sure. Matt did mention the Relay for Life, it is June, November, not June, November 6th in Temple City Park. This will be our 10th year in the first nine years of Relay for Life in Temple City. For our little city, we have raised over $432,000 for cancer research in the, in our first nine years. So there are going to be several activities coming up. Matt has had recycling drives in his driveway a couple of times. He-
Really Janet and Diana Doy.
Yeah, his wife Janet has been sponsoring some recycling drives. So they have many bags of recycling being dropped off. But we want to invite everybody to this year's Relay. This will be our 10th anniversary. And we're going forward, like we're going to be live at the park. So come on by, go, go to the website, find out more about what's going on and join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. With that, we're going to now move on to Melissa Espinoza. Melissa, what do you have for us?
Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to start by thanking Skills USA for the wonderful presentation. I think the student motivation and drive comes from the passion for the work and the really supportive advisor. So I want to thank Mr. Garcia for nurturing the drive in all of our talented students. I also want to thank Dr. Fricker, her cabinet, all the administrators, teachers and the staff, our classified staff for a successful start to the school year. I have to say that there were days that I walked into the district office and I see in Dr. Fricker's office, all these collaborating, all these folks collaborating and trying to make it the best start to year that they could possibly make it. And it was just wonderful to see the collaboration and just, you know, from one room to the other, just filled with, you know, folks, the administrators and the cabinet trying to make, you know, make plans for the year. So that was wonderful to see. I love seeing that and I think that's what makes collaboration, makes, you know, the best possible outcomes. So, you know, thank you for that. I also want to thank those organizations and community members that donated to our schools. Their support is so much appreciated. In terms of attendance, I attended the first round of Longdon's Back to School Night on 8/26. Thank you, Ms. Wexler, for your presentation and the joy and excitement you had talking about your class and the young TK students. I also attended the back to school breakfast, which was so well-planned. So thank you, everyone who had a hand in that planning. And congratulations to all the service award recipients for your years of service, your years of dedicated service. Thank you, thank you so much. I think that's one thing that, that Temple City stands out for. Temple City Unified stands out for longevity in terms of our employees. And so I want to really give kudos to all of our recipients there. And then I, last, I'm just looking forward to attending the remaining back to school nights that are coming in the upcoming weeks and thank you so much. And we'll pray for a good year this year, a great one. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Melissa. And then last but not least, Member Georgina, what would you like to share?
Thank you. I would like to congratulate everyone involved in the Skills USA program. It is a really vital program to those students that are interested in CTE. And a special congratulations to Jasmine and Elaine. Very impressive. I'd like to congratulate all our students who won awards in the Upper San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District Art Contest. And I think there was one more, according to the Chamber newspaper. Tiffany Wong, who's a second grader at Longdon, got second place in the K through two category. So congratulations to her also. I attended the ice cream socials. It was really nice to be able to meet the principals in person and welcome them to our district. And I attended the back to school breakfast at Temple City High School. It was so great to see everyone and to be back on a school campus. It was very nicely organized and I was really grateful that I got to participate in that. I attended our first home football game at Temple City High School and I had such a good feeling at that game. I got to see the band playing. I got to see the cheerleaders doing their thing, the football team playing football. And all the students that were in attendance, we actually had a really good crowd there. And it was just such an uplifting, positive feeling. And so I hope we have many more of those in this coming school year. I have been participating in the back to school nights and I try to, I guess, visit, visit online as many classrooms as I can. They, all the teachers have done an excellent job. Matter of fact, I give one on my phone and I get one on my laptop and I'm trying to go in and out of classrooms to visit everyone. Of course, I haven't been able to catch everyone, so I apologize if I didn't get to step into your classroom, but- But I really appreciate the ones that I got to visit. They're, they're doing a great job, their presentations were excellent. And finally, I am the liaison to the City of Temple City's Committee on Aging. And I actually got to do something. And talking to one of our teachers, she's interested at the Dr. Doug Sears Learning Center, interested in having some of the leadership students do some intergenerational activities. So I was able to put her together with someone from the city and we'll see if they'll be able to do something this year. So we'll keep our fingers crossed on that. And that is all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you, Donna. Okay, we're moving on to the highlight of tonight's meeting, probably. Student Board Member comments from Kiana Lee. Kiana, what can you-
Thank you, President Smith. It's an honor to be able to share with you tonight. I wanted to start by congratulating our TCHS Skills USA team on their extraordinary win. And like Mr. Garcia pointed out, it was the impossible happened in the improbable. So we are very, very proud of their successes and determination, especially during a less than ideal school year, to say the very least. Like Dr. Katarion, I am happy to report that our school sites have begun a smooth in-person school year. Each student at our physical school sites have received a school computer. And also another thank you to our tech services as Canvas is now up and running smoothly as our learning management system. We had our very first home football game. Thank you to those that came to participate and support against Mark Heppel two weeks ago. And our next home game is actually this Friday in two days at 7:00 PM sharp against Mountain View High School. It's going to be a home game. You can support our PEP and PEP boosters by purchasing spearware and Rams headwear. You can see them, they'll be selling them there at football game. And next Friday is also an away game at Rio Hondo Prep. Many of our school sites have already hosted their back to school nights, as many of our board members have reported. And our high school will be, our high school school site will be hosting theirs, the last one, virtually next Tuesday night, starting at 6:00 PM. This week at the high school is also our first Spear Week. And we will be hosting the Fall Rally on this Friday morning virtually. So students will actually be watching live from their classrooms. I also wanted to report that the five-star students program that was paid for by the DO is up and running and currently in use. For example, in tracking student demographics in student activities and athletics, such as Spear Week participation and nominating students for homecoming court. At our last board meeting, I also noted that we approved Resolution 212202, which observed this week as Yellow Ribbon Week, which promotes suicide prevention and mental health. So I know as soon as I saw it on our board meeting agenda, I knew it was definitely a cause that the high school had to support. So I brought it up to our leadership team and we have been working hand in hand, really hard, collaborating with our district's mental health committee to create fun and engaging activities all throughout this week to promote suicide prevention awareness. And we also distributed yellow ribbons for staff and faculty to support and wear all week. And again, thank you to our service award recipients. I was very glad to hear, actually, and I wanted to add on to board member Sneed's comment and thank Mr. Thomas Sulo for his 44 years of service at the TCUSD. I personally have the honor of having him as my wonderful cross-country coach. And I can honestly say that without his support and guidance, I truly don't know where I would be, where I am today in my athletic journey. He is so dedicated to watching all of his students grow successfully in their both academic and athletic careers. So I'm very thankful for all his love and thank you to all of the received our service awards. One of the, one of the greatest things I believe about being in Temple City is that the consistency and the support of our staff and faculty. And you can definitely see that many of our staff and faculty have been with the district for such a long time. And like Ms. Dr. Espinoza was saying, is that a lot of our staff have a lot of longevity with our district because we have such a wonderfully committed community to serving our students. And thank you all for listening tonight and those are my comments.
Great, thank you, Kiana. Excellent job. With that, we're going to move on to superintendent's comments, Dr. Kimberly Fricker. Kim, what do you, what would you like to share?
Thank you, President Smith. So it was a thrill to launch the school year. I just cannot thank our classified and our certificated staff enough for all that they have done in preparation for the start of the school year, everything from our grounds to our facilities, to our campuses, to the cleanliness of our campuses, to signage, to the offices that are ready, the, the staff members that have been hired and to the teachers who sit in our classrooms, both in person and in virtual. They have done an impeccable job at making sure they have overcome all of the obstacles that have come with launching a school year after we have been out of school for so long. So thank you to all of those folks who have really stepped up. I do welcome the new principals aboard. It was nice to go and see their ice cream social events and welcome them into their campuses and, and get to know them a little bit better before they started the school year and we will continue to do that. I also want to just thank Mr. Bob Westgate for his help in being a member of our COVID Task Force and helping us triage and go through systematically those who need to be contact traced. And that was sent on to Maury Montgomery and our new Director or Coordinator of Health, our new RN, our district nurse, Crystal. They have done an excellent job at triaging and contact tracing where we've needed. We've been very, very fortunate that many of those contact trace requests that we have gotten have actually just been either a common cold or not a COVID-related symptom. So we are very, very fortunate at this time. We do have updated dashboards on all of our websites that host all the information in terms of how many positive cases we have that are specific to that campus. And then how many individuals would have had to have been quarantined in association with that? And then the total number, in addition to, as Ms. Sneed had pointed out, the vaccination rates for either Temple City and for our youth of Temple City, and that would be ages 12 and above. And so we are very, very fortunate that we are in a top percentage bracket of those of us who have been vaccinated across our district. So we are very grateful for that. But those dashboard sites are very specific, especially to their specific school site. The district website is representative of all of the district. So it's district-wide, it's all campuses combined. So those would be updated as needed as we go through the contact tracing process. And then we actually do have positive COVID cases. And so that, in addition to the notifications that we send out via letter, that dashboard is, you can just go, you can look at it on your phone. You can look at it online on your computer and you can get that information readily. I do want to thank our friends at Omni Healthcare Centers who have put together our COVID-19 testing that's going on here at the district office. We have partnered with Privet, which is a secured document center where that information, that health information can be stored that is FERPA and HIPAA compliant. And, and I just want to thank all of the nurses at Omni who have been coming on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 2:00 to 6:00. They have done a great job, they're extremely professional, very easy to work with, very, very nice. And they've just been a great addition to putting in those measures to help our faculty and students either get tested if they want to or for the staff who are required to. So thank you to our partners with Omni. And then I just want to take a special time to recognize our principals for all of the work that they have done on their school sites to ready their school sites and to prepare their staff for opening. I know that some of the staff meetings at the beginning of the school year were full of COVID guidelines and directives. And I just appreciate all of the time and the attention that they put in to making sure that that information, those trainings were relayed to all of our staff members. So thank you for that, that all of those measures make big impacts on keeping everyone safe at every single school site. And finally, I just, the enrollment between the in-person and the virtual academy has been larger than expected. And I just want to thank Chris and Sylvia and Gina for all the work that they do in enrollment to make sure that everyone is slotted into classrooms as quickly as possible. And that those, the transfer that goes along with that in terms of whether they're going to virtual or coming back into in-person, the grading and, and all of that that goes with that transfer of student is done impeccably well. So I just want to thank everybody down there in the enrollment office and it is, it is truly running smoothly. And we, as students, come onto the waiting list, we are trying to get them into the virtual academy as quickly as possible. So I want to just thank Susan and her team for building that. What was supposed to be a school of like 300 has now turned into a school of almost 600. So we have, we have bloomed tremendously here in Temple City, but we're really proud of all their efforts. So that rounds out my report.
Hey, thanks, Kim. Actually, you reminded me of something else I saw on one of your email messages, that the virtual academy is now bigger, has more students enrolled in it than all the students at Cloverly and La Rosa combined. That's how big it's gotten. So-
That's true.
We, and, and so moving on to written communications, I would like to acknowledge a number of emails that I've received. I know my fellow board members have received both complimentary and a little bit critical in terms of maybe a few bumps in the road. We are pursuing perfection, but we're not pursuing it at the expense of the very good. And I'm very proud with what I see so many employees doing to try to be responsive and address anything that comes up. And I just wanted to put that on the table. We've, we've seen the emails, we've, we've read them, we're aware of it and we're working on it. Anybody else have anything written communication-wise you want to share? No? Okay. Then we are going to move on to the discussion information portion of our agenda, just one item tonight in the area of administration. And it's a report from Dr. Fricker on the opening of our schools and an update on the COVID prevention plan. Kim?
Thank you. Let me just share my screen. Okay, so as we start the school year, it has been very important for us to put together a COVID prevention plan that really encompasses everything that we've been doing. And, and the communications that you've seen come out of the district office with regard to some of the graphics, the flow charts for what do you do if you're ill, to if you're symptomatic, where do you go, to the vaccination opportunities that we've had and also the testing opportunities we've had. We've wanted to house all of the guidelines and all of the protocols in one spot so that, one, it's easier for all of us to locate them. And then, two, it's easier for, for us to share with the public. And so there isn't really a requirement to have them all housed in one spot. We do have to have a COVID prevention plan, but that plan for typical districts is much, much smaller. This plan is a little bit large, I'm so sorry, board members, it's over 40 pages. But it does house most of the, most of the component parts that we feel are really essential to not only launching the start of school, but then when we do, what would happen if some of these situations come up? And we're going to talk about a couple of those as I move through the slides. I just prepared a small PowerPoint just to kind of walk us through the highlights and the, the big ticket items of what's in the plan. This, when the board does, this is for discussion information tonight. It has been turned out to several people. If there are slight tweaks and changes that we need to make from now until the board meeting on the 22nd, when it's actually going to be approved, we have plenty of time to do that. If we've added, we need to add something, if we deleted, we need to delete, or if we've omitted something by accident. Now is really our time for everybody to kind of weigh in and see the work that we have done, see what we have prepared and then make sure that every voice is heard or that everyone's voice who, who wants the opportunity for voices to be heard. There's plenty of time for that to happen. So as we get started, we know that the returning to school, this roadmap of return to school really encompasses a lot of different areas. And we're going to talk about some of those areas in terms of, the first part of the, the COVID prevention program really outlines the LA County Department of Public Health guidelines, but it also outlines all other agency guidelines that we must follow. OSHA being another one of those agencies and then also the CDC. So we want to make sure that this is kind of your one-stop shop. It doesn't go down into the nitty-gritty, but it does give you a general overview of how we would handle situations and what we have put in place. Program offerings, it was really important for us to start school, making sure that students had access to content and curriculum. And through our offerings, as we've talked about at the beginning of school and our last presentation, in-person learning and the virtual academy, that independent study portion. As Susan Hemmings had mentioned, we really have focused on trying to put credential teachers with students in that virtual academy, making sure that our learners had access to our very valuable credential teachers. We know that they learn better when we have teachers in the classroom, whether it be in-person or virtual. It also outlines our food services program. Those students in both in-person and in-virtual have access to our food services program. Marisol Cortez does a very good job at running the food services programs and then providing those healthy and nutritious meals for both of our students in both of those academies. Virtual students can go to the high school and they can pick up meals during, during that lunch period, should they want to or need to as they study at home. And then it outlines employee training. And that employee training will not only include some of the mandated reporting that we have to do, COVID training that we would have to do, bloodboard pathogen, but also some training in the areas of software, in the areas of Canvas, professional and learning communities, response to intervention and some of the other programs that we do offer or want to offer to reduce or mitigate learning loss across our district. So it really outlines the highlighted portion of the trainings that we are providing at the onset of this year and through the fall. Some of the big COVID guidelines deal with the extracurricular activities, making sure that we have addressed those. Also athletics, assemblies, field trips and family and community events. Some of these events, especially assemblies and field trips, have to be tailored down. As we mentioned with the student board comments, some of them are virtual wherever they can be. And then when we see updated guidelines, when, as we see the COVID cases decrease and more access and availability open up, obviously, these things will be changing inside of this document as the changes come from the LA County Department of Public Health. But as of right now, it really outlines what our athletic programs must do. And that would include weekly testing for, for students in those high-impact, moderate to high-impact areas. We do provide that testing here on campus. There have been times where we have gone over to the high school campus and tested them there as well. In addition, band, music, performing arts, what those programs should be following. And that is performing outside wherever necessary. You can perform inside, but masks are required outside. There is, there is provisions, if you are engaging in that physical activity, whether it's band or athletics, you can remove your mask. But trying to make sure that students are healthy and fit, there's no risk of choking or there's no risk of overheating in some of those activities. Allowances have been made for those programs and they are outlined within this document. In addition, we thought of our concession stands, our booster clubs and transportation for athletes. We have contracted with transportation agencies. Masking is required on transportation, but physical distancing is not. So we want to make sure that all of those standards and guidelines are followed when students are either attending events like a football game, which it was very, I'm so excited to see the football game coming up and seeing our band play and our cheerleaders lead and our football team play. So, and then also, you know, monitoring our concession stands, we know how valuable it is for patrons to have access to that. But we also want them to do it in a very safe environment. Thank you, Mr. Gina, for volunteering in the concession stand, that was greatly appreciated. And then going on to just face coverings and those expectations, we know that Temple City takes safety extremely seriously and making sure that our students and staff have face masks or face coverings on both indoors and outdoors will just slow or stop the, the spread of COVID-19 or the transmission between people. So any steps that we can take just to make sure we keep our staff and student healthy, we are committed to do. And I just want to thank our staff for being extremely diligent on playgrounds, making sure that they're out there, they're active. They're trying to make sure that the students are physically distanced to an arm length away from one another. That's kind of our general guideline, there's no mandate on physical distancing. But that's our general guideline, just to staff to make sure that we're all really being very vigilant in, in putting these guidelines in place at campuses. We also went through the facility, we have engineering controls that are outlined within this document that deals with our air, our HVAC systems, water filling stations, wherever we can input bottle filling stations where they're either touchless or they're single-point touch. One, they're easier to clean and then two, it's much, much safer for students. The bottle filling stations have filters built in them. There was a question about water safety, I think it was from La Rosa, so I do want to answer that. Our city, our water companies actually test our water weekly and make sure that it passes all city regulations and guidelines. We did check with the city on that. And in addition, all of our water, whether it be in restrooms or drinking fountains or bottle- on that. And in addition, all of our water, whether it be in restrooms or drinking fountains or bottle filling stations or just regular faucets, were completely flushed to code at the beginning of the school year. We do know that some of those have not been turned on in a while, and we wanted to make sure that there was no residue or contaminants in those systems, and so they were completely flushed throughout the course of the month, coming back, opening our schools. In addition, finally, we have all of those shade structures that I mentioned before, and that's outlined here as well as facility use. I'm so sorry, facility use. We did limit facility use to indoor, for the indoor spaces, and that is just to make sure that those indoor campuses stay very nice, clean, and sanitized. And it's the, for the other reason too, is anybody that's inside that facility, should we have a case or suspected case of COVID, we would have to contact trace all of those individuals. So the less people we have in there, the less people we have to contact trace and then notify or follow up on a report to, to LADPH. So we want to make sure that, you know, we make sure we know who's on our campuses, and so if we do have to contact trace, we can do that very easily. Hannah's hand sanitizing and washing. We did have washing stations, hand washing stations purchased and put on every single school site for additional hand washing outside. If you have, anyone has seen the report or the video by Myra Rizella over at Emperor, you will see her and her little friend DJ telling everybody or showing everybody how to wash their hands. So making sure that we have plenty of access, not only to restrooms, but also hand washing stations and then sanitizers in classrooms. Vaccinations, it does outline the vaccinations and per California Department of Public Health order released on August eleventh, we mentioned before that either our, our, all school employees have to require, are required to show proof of vaccination and/or submit to COVID nineteen testing. We do have that testing here with our Omni Health provider. And then again, Privet is our portal for, for document storage, and it is secure and it is for HIPAA compliant. So you can upload your vaccination verification and/or if you do get a test from the testing site, the drive-through testing clinic here, you can upload that document right there. Everyone, every staff member should be signing up for a portal account through Privet, and we will be repeating that information to staff to make sure that they just have a reminder this week of how to do that. I just want to show you here, this is the TCUSD COVID nineteen dashboard. This is what you would see on the current district website. The district, again, is all of the sites combined, whereas if you go to the individual school sites, you will see a dashboard that is similar in that school's colors scheme and logo, and it will have just related information to that school site. This site is updated. Wherever there is a new number to report, we do update it. And then it also has on here the community vaccination percentage for the city of Temple City, and then for the city of Temple City, twelve through seventeen, and then the, the city for all of its patrons. So we do try to keep that up to date as well. And you can see that for our student population, ninety-three point six percent are vaccinated in that age bracket, twelve through seventeen. So that is a great kudos to our families who are very safety minded as well. And then across our city, it's eighty-two point four percent. So we are very, very fortunate that we are one of the cities that have very high vaccination rates. With COVID nineteen reporting, we do have mandated reporting that is, that is outlined within the document for reporting to the county health department. So whenever we do have a positive COVID nineteen case on our campus, we are required to report that to the county, and then we are required to report the contact tracing process that we go through. We do have the documents inside of this large CPP document that outlines student and staff illness flow chart. Those were the two flow charts. There's four flow charts all together. The student staff illness flow chart and also the student staff potential or confirmed COVID nineteen case. I showed those last time in my PowerPoint presentation. They are included in the document here for viewing, and so those are the, the documents that have been dispersed out to our staff and to our students so that everyone knows what to do if they are showing signs and symptoms of illness. Or if you do have a confirmed case, who do you report to? And that's very important because once you report it, it triggers an alert to Mari Montgomery and Crystal, their team, the district nurse, their team to begin the contact tracing process and make sure that we go through that as quickly as possible. We cannot report out to the public of a positive case until we get a confirmation that it is a positive case. Sometimes we have a suspected positive, but we cannot report it out. Sometimes in the neighborhoods, you can hear of positive cases. Sometimes they're suspected and it's rumor, sometimes it's suspected, and then it could take two to three days, forty-eight hours, or seven, up to seventy-two hours to get that test confirmed. Once we get the confirmation of a positive test result, that is when we report out. So once we get that confirmation, it is only then that we can actually report it out, both to the LA County Department of Public Health and to the school community of which it came. So we do try to do that as quickly as possible. But sometimes you hear it before we hear it. So there could be a little bit of a delay, but as soon as we do get that confirmation case verified, then we do report that out to the school community and to the Department of Public Health. That contact tracing process, it is highly dependent on people getting back to us, making phone calls. They are person-to-person phone calls to make sure that you are notified by a human. And sometimes if you're notified by email, not by a phone call, people tend to panic or they get worried, and so they do have questions. So it's really important that we do take the time to call each member of that contact tracing process if you have an exposure or a possible exposure, and we will really walk you through that process. We have enlisted a couple of other people in the district, myself included, and Mr. Westgate to make sure that we go through that and try to triage the real cases from the just suspected or not of false cases so that Mari and Crystal can really contact those individuals as quickly as possible. We do have that COVID nineteen testing plan. It goes through the district plan that we offer here, and then, and then the employee and student quarantine times. So once you get a phone call, Ms. Montgomery will walk you through the, the employee or student quarantine periods and when you should have a return to learning or return to work date. And so she walks that through with you in terms of how do you report your absences? How do you go through the process? What documentation do you need, if any? So she will actually walk through that with, with every single member that she does contact. Inspections and closures, a big part of keeping everyone safe here at Temple City is really in prevention. I think prevention is the best indicator of safety and health, and we do take that extremely seriously. Our principals submit weekly TCUSD COVID nineteen safety inspections, and that's to make sure that all of the guidelines that we've put out in the roadmap document and in the previous documents that we've sent to staff and, and families that those principals are inspecting their own school site weekly to make sure that they are all put in place. If there are problems, questions, concerns, they reach out to myself, or they reach out to Ms. Montgomery, and then we triage what those problems are, and we put in solutions as quickly as possible. We also have quarterly family safety and facility safety inspections. Those are larger inspections, and then we have annual district safety inspections. Those are done by third parties, outside parties, and they, they have a much larger scope of keeping the entire campus safe. And we also have to walk through campus closures. So at this time, I want to just reassure everybody, we are not talking about campus closures, but we have to plan for campus closures, just in the event, just in case we have to actually have one. The first closure would, would really look like a classroom closure, and what would happen if we did have to close a single class on a campus. It walks through who would be notified and how they will be notified, and it also walks with the process and procedure for closing a class on campus. And yes, we do have to notify not only the classroom that is closing, but we do notify the entire campus, and we notify other principals around the district so that if they hear things, if parents get nervous or worried, and they call a campus that was not having a classroom closure, that principal would have the information that they needed to kind of calm the waters and tell those worried parents what exactly was happening and where. So we do have, for all of the closer scenarios, and they're just scenarios at this point, we do outline who would be contacted, how we would do that, and what the students would need to do in terms of accessing their content or their curriculum while they are on a closure. The second closure that we could incur would be a school site closure, and that would be due to an outbreak. An outbreak is really three COVID positive cases that are epidemiologically related. That means they have to have a intertransmission from one person to another on that school site. And so it is very specific. It's not just three cases on a site. They have to be interconnected. They have to be epidemiologically related. In some cases, they call them Epi-related for short, if you've heard that from the Department of Public Health. So that's what that means. And so if we do have that, it's really the LA County Department of Public Health that would indicate to us that we do have three confirmed epidemiologically related cases, and at that time, they would close the campus. So we could not open the campus until they deem it safe to open the campus. So that is really something that the, the Department of Public Health issues in order to us. That is, we have not had that this year, and, but we do have to plan for that. So outlined in this closure plan, we identify the employees, we notify the campus facility, we also have notifications across TCUSD to make sure that people understand what it is. Hold on, my light just went out. Sorry. To know what it is and what it isn't, and to reduce fears around the district. And then we do have that COVID strike team that would go in and sanitize the entire campus, and then we would have the work, return to work, return to learn plan for welcoming those people back on campus once the campus is deemed open. The final closure that we could incur would be a district closure, and that was what we incurred eighteen months ago on March thirteenth. And this would be a, this would be in response to widespread community outbreak, and that would, that would indicate that the, the district would close. We would follow the same kind of communication guidelines, and we'd fi- follow the same distance learning format that we went into in the previous district closure, but that's outlined here as well. And so making sure that all of this information is readily available helps us get a head start should any of these scenarios happen. And then it would help all of our administrative staff be readied in case we have to have either a classroom closure, a campus closure, or a district closure. So in terms of communication and services, we do want to make sure that our employees, students, and parents have accurate correspondence coming from the district with regard to either the guidelines that we must follow, the safety processes that we must follow if you are ill, or who you report absences to, but also to make sure that, that our, our TCUSD family knows that we are doing anything and everything to make sure that our campuses are as safe as possible for in-person learning. We also have put out information for our Virtual Academy, should they want to choose that. We are looking for different ways to disseminate information via our newsletters or our websites. We have related services to make sure all of our communications are translated in terms of, we, we want to focus on social emotional learning for students as well. That part of related services is in this plan, which includes not only our social emotional learning curriculum, but also our CARESOLIS, which is our counseling support and PBIS support, the training and the instruction that is going ongoing through, for our staff throughout this year, and then just record keeping and reporting that are obligations that the district is mandated to do. The other components, in addition to our appendices, which are forms that are at the back of this document, additional considerations are just case scenarios of what we would do if, and one would be if we had multiple cases on campus, and the other scenario would be if we have an outbreak on campus. And what are those, what, what do those look like in terms of how TCUSD would manage those two individual, like, scenario crises, crises? So that's all included in the COVID prevention plan. Like I said, it, enjoy the read. If you want to read it all the way through it. If you have questions, comments, concerns, please, by all means, you can email me and, and ask me any questions or comments. If you have any additions or things that you feel that we have omitted in the plan, then you can just send those comments to me, and then we, over the course of the next two weeks, we will look at those and incorporate those, and then we will bring this back for approval at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Kim. Are there any questions or comments from my fellow board members? Donna?
I apologize if I missed this, but is the dashboard current cases, current active cases, or is it cumulative?
It's both. There's the current active, there's the current cases, and then there's the current quarantines, and then there's a cumulative number from the beginning of the school year. So that accumulated number will keep continuing for every school site and for the district, but we will update the current cases.
Thank you.
Melissa? Thank you for the, the overview. I just wanted to ask, is the plan, once this is approved, is the plan to have this COVID prevention plan posted like online for parents to review or for the community to see? Because I know in the emails that Matt referenced that we've been seeing, I think there's a lot of concern about transparency and you know, information, and I'm just wondering if this will be available once approved.
Yes, it will be available. Parts of this plan has already come out. But yes, the whole entirety will be published on all of the websites under that COVID section. Yep. The old plan is there. This is just a much expanded version of that.
Oh, that's great to know. I think we'll be, would like that.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I want to say, Kim, this was very comprehensive. I know this took a lot of time and a lot of work. So really appreciate that. A quick question. I know that this year with food services, we have to provide a free breakfast and free lunch for all students. Has that had an impact on the, the physical distancing piece during lunch for students?
We are, we, in fact, we just had principals go out to make sure that we are very vigilant at lunchtime. The shade structures and the seating arrangements underneath those shade structures have helped tremendously this year to space out students, and we've just taken inventory to see if we need more lunch tables out there to space out additional students. So if we do need that, we did, we have a meeting with the principals tomorrow morning to make sure that if there are needs like that across the district, that we attend to those right away, and we can get more lunch tables, or we can space out kids as much as possible. In the lunch lines, you know, we try to keep them, the, the general direction is an arm length away. So every once in a while, of course, you get really excited kids who want to come in. But we do, our, I know that our staff is very, very vigilant in trying to keep them at least an arm length away to keep them as safe as possible.
Okay, and also.
We'll monitor it.
That's great. I know by October fifteenth, the governor now has mandated that staff members will have to prove vaccination or be tested every week for COVID nineteen. Likewise, this applies to volunteer workers. I know our PTAs are phenomenal in, you know, historically, they've been volunteering on campus. Do we have a system for ensuring the volunteer workers, the ones who come in and volunteer, are vaccinated?
So we will have that available for our volunteers. Right now, we've held volunteers off of the campuses just because we want to make sure that our staff can get their vaccination verification up and running, and that those who need testing, we weren't quite sure about the testing volume that we would see here at the district, so we didn't want to tax that right away. We want to make sure that our staff has access to that, and also the students who need access to the testing. Remember, our athletes need to be tested as well for those in the moderate and high contact sport areas. So we want to make sure that they all have a rhythm and an access point to, to get that testing, first of all. Then when volunteers come back on campus, yes, they will have the access to the same portal that we're using through Privet, and they would have access to the same testing through Omni here at the district office at the drive-through.
Okay, and one final question, my last question. The, the Omni testing, it is an opt-in. The parents will have to provide consent for their kids to be tested.
Yes.
You know, what, what percentage of our kids are being tested or have been tested on average?
I, I can get that information specifically for you. I have not. I, I can get that information specifically for you. I have not, by adult or by student in terms of how many have come through the testing. I could tell you that our athletes are very, very diligent. All of them have tested and cleared prior to their events where they want to participate. So they have been extremely well with a good point that you bring up with regard to the consent form, the parent consent form. So it doesn't matter if you're an adult staff member, you give consent to be tested. And if you are a child in our district, your parent does give consent. If you're coming through the line and you're not an athlete in that moderate to high risk, you have to give consent every single time you test. If you are an athlete who is in moderate to high impact zone, then you give consent one time and you know that you're coming for that weekly battery of, of testing. So while you're in season, it covers you for the entire season because you have to come back every single week. Whereas if you're a student and you just maybe think you're symptomatic or you think you've been exposed, obviously that's not a weekly occurrence. You would give consent every time for that.
Okay. And just one final comment, not a question. I just want to have the public know that the, the district cannot require all kids to be tested because of the consent component. Also, the, the district is not wasting public funds by testing kids because we have to provide one, another level of safety for our kids by doing testing. So we are in, in some ways in between. We cannot go to any of those two extremes.
Right, correct. That is correct.
Hey, Mary?
Yeah, I want to thank you and your, your staff for putting together a plan that's so comprehensive. You've covered all the bases and I think having it on the dashboard where parents can access it. Having the information assures that we have transparency and a cut down on rumors of this is what I think is happening. They can just actually look at the plan and there, it's, it's, you know, it's cut and dry. It's not like this is what I think. This is actually what the plan is. So I think that's really important that you've put it out there for the parents and the families so they can see, here's what our plan is. And so I really commend you and your, your team for putting together a really comprehensive, you've covered, you've you're being very proactive about what's going to happen if. Hopefully, we're not going to get to the ifs, so, but you've laid a plan for those ifs. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much, Kim. We are going to move on now to the discussion action portion of our agenda. Also, starting first with administration, item twenty-two, which calls for a motion to adopt resolution twenty-one, twenty-two dash zero-three, opening of schools safeguards and vaccine, vaccination verification. We have a motion and a second to approve, please. Saw a motion from Member Espinoza and a second from Member Giorgino. Are there any comments or questions on this? We've pretty much just covered it. Okay, I will go ahead and call for the vote, starting first with student board member Kiana Lee, Kiana? Preferential vote? Yes. Okay, IMES, Member Sneed? You're muted.
Yes.
Thank you. Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Giorgino?
Yes.
And Member Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, so the vote carries five zero. Moving on to item twenty-three, which calls for a motion to approve the Temple City Unified School District School Connected Organization/Booster Club Manual, which we talked about a little bit earlier. I have a motion and a second to approve, please. Oops, I wasn't, Mary, Member Sneed? And I saw Member Lynn with a second. Sorry if I missed somebody in between. So I'm gonna, any comments or questions on this? Melissa, please.
So first, I just want to thank Mari Montgomery and Dr. Fricker for adding the checklist to the Booster Club Handbook. I think it's helpful. I'm really sensitive to the fact that we have, you know, these are volunteers and, you know, we got to do what we can to make it as easy as possible for them. So thank you so much for doing that. I did have a question about page fourteen that was brought up to me this week. And it has to do with the, kind of the limitation of district employees holding certain types of roles in the booster boards. In the handbook, it kind of limits that. And I understood that that limitation was based on FICMAT prohibitions. And so I went to the FICMAT handbook and I was looking for any mention of that. And I didn't find the reference. So I'm just wondering, did I get that wrong? It was not a FICMAT restriction? Or did I miss it? I just, I saw some things that made me believe that it, it, it wasn't a restriction and that as long as the district employee was operating as a, you know, on a personal basis, that they could, they, you know, they could even create a booster club if they wanted to. And I'm, I'm bringing this up just because I'm sensitive to the fact that we have a lot of district employees that have their children involved in different things and they're very active members. And I just want to make sure that, that we, you know, that we're looking at that. And if it is a FICMAT requirement or restriction or ed code or something, I just want to make sure that, that district employees know what the basis of that restriction is.
Yeah, absolutely. So it is, it is in the land of FICMAT. And FICMAT is the Fiscal Crisis Management and Assistance Team. So it's really that governing structure that governs like our ASPs and the, the funds that come in and out of student government organizations and/or booster community organizations that are affiliated with the school district. And so in there, in the language of FICMAT, it is highly suggested that they do not sit on as officers. They, employees can start booster clubs, they can be involved in booster clubs, they can do a lot of roles, committees, fundraising activities, that sort of thing in association with booster clubs. The reason that they're asked not to sit on as officers if you are an employee is because the four officers, there's typically four of them, that can sign checks. So not all officers sign checks, but, but the president, vice president, obviously your fiscal person, and sometimes your secretary, they do sign checks on behalf of the booster club. And you have to have two signatures, just like you do in PTA organizations, to issue a check. And so it does require more than one officer to sign on checks. The reason behind employees not, you know, signing checks on behalf of a booster is that it puts that employee at high risk. If something should go wrong, if something should happen, if they're affiliate or a part of that process, you know, you can run the risk of having a credential issue should, you know, it be found that there was a problem or impropriety. So it does, it does put you at a higher level of risk in terms of being an employee. The one area where it restricts is if it's in the land of conflict of interest. So you can, but if you are, if you have a child in the booster club, that you are then an officer of that, that is issuing, that is in a sense a conflict of interest for that. Or if the booster club is in direct affiliation with the school that you work. And so there could be undue influence, if you will, that is a conflict of interest for you to be an officer in those types of organizations. So in the trainings that we've received from FICMAT, and I can send you the slide deck from that, it does say not allowed. So it does come from the land of FICMAT. Is there, could be allowance or provision, sure, but that employee is putting themselves at risk, definitely. Should they, should they do that? And that's why it's in there. It's more for the employee's protection than the district's protection.
Thank you.
Any else have anything? Okay, thank you, Kim. I'll go ahead and call for the vote, starting with the preferential vote from student board member Lee. Kiana?
Yes.
Member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Giorgino?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
And IMES as well, so the motion carries five zero. We're now moving on to item twenty-four, which calls for a motion to receive board bylaw for first reading. Board bylaw ninety-two fifty, renumeration, reimbursement, and other benefits. I have a motion and a second to approve, please. Motion from Member Lynn, second from Member Giorgina. Are there any comments or questions on this? No? Okay. Seeing that again, this is just receiving for first reading. We'll be doing a second reading and approving at our next meeting. So I'm going to start voting with student board member Lee.
Yes.
Okay. Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Giorgino?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
IMES and Member Sneed?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries five zero. Moving on to item twenty-five, falls in the area of business services. And it calls for a motion to approve the twenty-twenty dash twenty-twenty-one unaudited financial report. And I need a motion in a second, then we'll have Alex make a brief presentation. Motion from Member Giorgino, second from Member Sneed. And I'll go ahead and ask Alex to share some, some of this with us.
Hi, good evening, President Smith and board members. Let me share my screen so we can get going. Oh, my gosh. Okay, let me know when it's, when everyone can see it.
Voila.
Good to go? Okay. So thanks for inviting me to share with you guys tonight. I just want to provide a brief update on our unaudited actuals. Basically, just an overview of the financial results for the past school year. So we'll start with a quick overview. The structure of this presentation will be very similar to the, the presentation we did recently on budget. So you'll see the purpose and the budgeting cycle. Some highlights from our unaudited actuals, the results of our unaudited actuals, and then a quick update on COVID funding and the next steps that we need to take. So as far as the purpose, approval of the unaudited actuals is required by ed code to occur by September fifteenth each year. Once we approve it at the district level, it then goes to our county office and they're required to approve that by October fifteenth each year. So tonight, I'll be giving you the quick presentation. And then in addition, kind of in coordination with this, we also are required to adopt the GAN limit resolution by September fifteenth each year. And then same kind of process, we'll submit that information to our county office along with our unaudited actuals. And they are then required to adopt by October fifteenth. Okay, so our budget cycle, last time we came to you at this update, we were right here at the top at our adopted budget. And we have moved slightly over to here to September. We're now at the unaudited actuals. So we're kind of jumping back to last fiscal year here and just giving you an update on how the year ended up. So just a couple of quick highlights on unaudited actuals for this year. So this year, we did have the zero percent COLA. So you'll see our LCFF coming in just a little lower than it would in typical years since we didn't receive that COLA funding. The governor's budget did include that five point zero seven percent mega COLA for next year for the twenty-one, twenty-two. So we'll kind of recapture some of that lost COLA funding at that time. We do still have declining enrollment that we're experiencing. And we have the hold harmless on our ADA this year, so we're not going to see that impact this year as we're still being funded on our nineteen-twenty ADA. But that effect will be to come in the future. Personnel expenditures, those are always the biggest part of our budget and any school district's budget. So we have our STIRS and PIRS rates that are still continuing to increase. But this year, we did recognize some savings in reduction of sub costs. We just had less, less need for subs this year with COVID and distance learning. And then the other big highlight from the budget is just the COVID funding sources. We've received a very large amount of money and different grants for COVID. And we were able to leverage that to kind of create savings in other areas. And we still have additional funding coming as well. And so this is our enrollment. You have the historical and the projected forward enrollment. You'll see that we are projected to decline. It's something that's happening statewide. And we are just projecting, you know, a loss of about fifty students in the first couple of years there and then about a hundred in that out year. So this is something we'll just have to keep in consideration as we move forward and, you know, keeping staffing levels appropriate with the level of students. And I know that we're doing a lot of hard work with our virtual academy and kind of working on trying to increase some enrollment in that area. So that may result in some change to this projection that actually could be positive for the district. So moving on to revenues, you'll see LCFF continues to be by far the largest portion of our funding. We came in just around fifty-three million this year. We also have our federal, state, and local funding. Federal and state will see some big increases this year compared to a typical year. And that is a result of all those COVID grants that we've received, including items like the CRF funding, the ESTER funding, the state learning laws, the ELO grant, the IPI grant. There's all these new pots of money coming out related to COVID that you'll see reflected in that federal and state bucket. As far as expenditures, you can see that personnel continues to be by far the largest portion here. It comes in around eighty percent of our expenses. In a typical year, that would be even a little bit higher than eighty percent. But because of all this COVID funding, we've been investing in a lot of additional PPE, distance learning materials and supplies, in-person learning materials and supplies. So we do see kind of a bit of a jump in these categories just in comparison to here. And then just kind of another view of our expenditures. So again, you can see here's the actual dollar amounts that are associated with those percentages. And we see, you know, certificated salaries, classified salaries, and employee benefits. This would include the STIRS and PIRS, retiree benefit costs. And that does continue to be, of course, the largest portion of our expenditures. We also have our books and supplies here that would include items like books, classroom materials, custodial materials, small pieces of equipment. Then we have our services and other operating, which would include any of our contracted services, utilities, basically anything that's not a tangible good or supply. And then under capital outlay and other outgo, we have any of our capital expenditures that come out of our general fund, tuition payments that are made, and then our inter-fund transfers. So the, the three percent RMA transfer that is required and the two hundred and fifty thousand that's being set aside annually for the OPEP costs. Moving into the reserves, you can see the various categories. We have our two percent board required reserve that we're continuing to meet. There's the three percent RU that is legally required. You'll see the legally restricted programs coming in at a bigger portion this year. That's reflective of COVID grant money that has been awarded to us but not spent yet. We did receive some large awards close to the end of the fiscal year for ELO and IPI. So you'll see some of that money sitting there in that balance. We also have our LCFF supplemental for our targeted students. So these are the funds that we receive through our LCFF specifically to benefit those higher needs populations, our low income, our EL students. There's also a portion for textbook adoptions, and this includes the next gen science standards for TK to five and six through twelve. Under our other category, that would include union health and welfare, the school medical administrative activities. And there's actually one new item in this category this year. It's referred to as a GASB thirty-one fair market value adjustment. So starting this year, the auditors are requiring that we book that adjustment. That is basically a, an entry that we make to recognize unrealized gains or losses on our cash account and the investment we keep with the county. So there was a small loss, unrealized loss there this year. So that is included in that other category. Next year, that, it's really an accounting entry. It'll just be reversed and we'll do a new consideration each year to see whether our cash had any unrealized gain or loss. And then the unallocated reserve, we'll see that this came in pretty good this year. So this is just what's left over when we consider all these other items. Because we were able to utilize the COVID funding and really leverage that, we were able to shift some expenses into the ESTER funding and other buckets of, of money to create savings for the district in our unrestricted categories. This slide just kind of presents a breakdown of the unrestricted versus restricted for our general fund. So this is just kind of a nice way to look at the data with this COVID money coming in. It, it seems to kind of skew things a bit. So this breaks it out. You can see these are our normal unrestricted funds of the district. And this column would include any of our restricted funding sources, including those COVID sources. You can see these are our normal unrestricted funds of the district, and this column would include, um, any of our restricted funding sources, including those fund, uh, COVID sources. That also includes our title funding, our special ed funding, anything with a restriction. Um, so you can see we have our total revenues shown. In addition, the total expenses, and that gives us our preliminary surplus or deficit. Uh, we then have our contributions to our special education program. And then on the unrestricted side, we have transfers out for that RMA, uh, routine restricted maintenance account, um, as well as the two hundred and fifty thousand to the OPEP fund. And this line here, the net change really gives you the, the end results, um, by restricted and unrestricted category. So you can see on the unrestricted side, we did come out a little bit, just a smidge positive this year. Um, that is largely a result of, you know, cost savings that were generated through utility savings, sub-cost savings. And again, leveraging that COVID funding, um, from the restricted category to kind of fill in for costs where we could. Um, and you'll see on the restricted side, um, we had quite a bit of revenue and expense going on. And that's again, just reflective of all that COVID money that the district did receive. You'll see quite a big surplus, and that's again, because we received that money so late in the year, it wasn't actually completely spent. That money is going to roll forward and be able to be utilized for the next two to three fiscal years, just depending on the grant and the stipulations that each has. Um, this slide, uh, presents our other funds. So there's various other funds in the district that we maintain for specific purposes. You will see a new fund on here this year, the Fund O Eight Student Body Fund. We had previously taken this to board to authorize the new, uh, the opening of this new fund. And this is in, uh, response to the GASB eighty-four requirements. So previously ASB funds were considered a fiduciary activity of the district. With the issuance of the GASB statement eighty-four, those are now considered a special revenue fund. So we've moved those from being fiduciary into being a governmental fund of the district. Uh, so you'll see this beginning balance is what would have been here had we been treating this as a governmental fund all along. Um, and then this chart just kind of shows revenues and expenses for each of these funds, your net change, and then where we ended up. So all of our funds are ending positive, which is great news. Uh, we also have, the other funds are, um, things we've shown before, nothing else new. So we have our adult education fund for the adult ed program. Um, our child development fund for our ELP program, which is really picking up already this year. Our revenues came in pretty low last year just with the closures and everything, but they are up and running again. I know they've been crazy busy trying to get the program going. Um, cafeteria fund is just for our food service program. Um, this fund, revenues did come in fairly low, just in response to lower meal counts with the closures. Um, and now that we're back in person and serving meals onsite and as well as the drive-through for the virtual academy, I know those revenues have been picking up again as well. Um, our expenditures, we did manage to keep a bit lower in this fund. We were able to utilize the ESTER funding, uh, to minimize the loss in this fund and maintain our staffing. So you'll see we had not too much of a loss in that fund this year, which was great, and we ended in that positive balance. Um, our Fund fourteen is our RMA, so this is where we're accounting for that routine restricted maintenance. Um, and then we have our Fund twenty reserved for, uh, post-employment benefits. You'll see we have our two hundred and fifty thousand coming in. It looks just a bit short of the two fifty this year, and that is because of that new GASB thirty-one requirement. We have to book that, um, unrealized loss, uh, related to the investment, um, in the cash in county. Uh, we also have our Fund twenty-one for our Measure S. Um, most of the expenses, I think actually all of the expenses you'll see here are related to the ongoing shade structure project, which I know we are getting very close to wrapping up. Uh, we also have our capital facilities. This is developer fee fund. And we have just a little bit of expenditure starting here related to the preschool site. So that will be something that will probably be kicking off a lot more this upcoming year. Um, in Fund thirty-five, this is where we get our state matching funds from OPSC. So we did have that twenty-eight million come in. And we're anticipating approximately another, uh, three to four million should be coming in sometime this upcoming fiscal year. Uh, these monies can be used for any, um, capital projects throughout the district. So the only stipulation on that fund is that these are required to be used on capital expenses. Uh, we also have our special reserve for capital outlay. This is kind of just, um, a balance that's been kind of sitting here maintained, uh, until we have any specific capital outlay projects that the district would like to start setting aside money in here, so this will be upcoming as well. And then we just have our Fund fifty-one where the general obligation bonds, uh, repayments are made by our county office. Uh, also just wanted to provide you guys with a quick update on the COVID funding. Um, so you can see this first column is all of the awards that have been granted to the district. Um, this column here will show you what we have spent to date, um, as of this end of the, as of June thirtieth. And this column here is what we have remaining, um, and you'll see the awards along the side here. So, um, starting with the ESTER one, we have utilized all of that funding. Uh, we also have our ESTER two, which we use just a tiny sliver of. Most of that funding is still available at this point. Um, ESTER three is this quite large chunk here. We haven't used any of that funding yet. Um, our ed services team is in the process of updating our ESTER three expenditure plan, which will be brought for your approval, um, so that we can begin spending that funding. We also had the gear and the CRF, which were both entirely expended. You'll see those here. Those monies are gone. Um, we, we had SB one seventeen. It's this little tiny sliver barely shows up, so we still have that funding available. Uh, the reason we haven't utilized that funding yet is because there is no expenditure deadline for that funding. So we've been trying to utilize the funds with, um, sooner deadlines first, just to not have any of those funds expire on us and lose any of that funding. Um, state learning loss, we did expend that full grant as well. Um, so the good news is the grants that had the deadline of June thirtieth, we've spent all of those. We did not lose any of that funding. We were able to leverage that to provide additional services and PPE for our students. And then the two later grants that were announced for the ELO or the expanded learning opportunities and the IPI or the in-person instruction. Um, that was quite a good chunk of money there too, and we did start a bit on those, um, using the IPI for the in-person instruction that we began providing last school year and utilizing the ELO for our summer school and our step program. And there's still quite a bit of funding left available in those two grants as well. Um, so as far as next steps, uh, we would ask, the staff would recommend approval of the unaudited actuals tonight. Uh, we'll also be adopting the GAN limit resolution. And then as far as our budget cycle, we will move into the first interim financial report, uh, report in December and give an update on how the year is going at that point. And that is what I have for you tonight. Are there any questions, comments?
Can you turn the screen back to everybody?
Yes. Oh, my gosh. There we go.
There you go. Okay, are there any comments or questions for Alexa? I don't see any. You were pretty thorough. Did a bang-up job. Okay, so if that's true, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote, and we'll start first with, uh, our student board member Kiana Lee's. Kiana? Uh-oh, she gone? No? Kiana? Okay, I'm gonna move on then, uh, student, uh, excuse me. Oh, there you go. Thank you. Okay, member Georgino?
Yes.
Uh, member Lynn?
Yes.
Uh, I M E S, member Sneed?
Yes.
And member Espinoza?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries five zero. Thank you. Um. That, we are on to item twenty-six, which calls for a motion to adopt, uh, resolution twenty-one, twenty-two dash zero four, adopting the GAN limit for the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one, and two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two fiscal years. May I have a motion and a second to approve, please? Motion from member Lynn, second from member Georgino. Are there any comments or questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Uh, preference, preference vote, student board member Lee?
Yes.
Uh, member Lynn?
Yes.
I M E S, member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
And member Georgino?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries five zero. That, we're moving on to item twenty-seven, which, uh, is receipt of bids and award of contractor for bus transportation for extracurricular and athletic transportation services. So I may have a motion and a second to approve, please. Motion from member Espinoza, second from member Georgino. Are there any comments or questions on this? Yes, member Lee, simple, we're, we're Lee.
Thank you, President Smith. I just have a quick question. Is the fiscal impact of seventy-five thousand divided, um, for athletics between all, um, all school sites or just the high school?
So the, oh, I can answer that. The contract is a not-to-exceed amount. So we set it to make sure that we have enough resources for buses for our district. Their primary, uh, responsibility for setting that limit is for athletics. I do believe most of that, uh, the majority of it does come from the high school. There are a few instances where, um, the Oak Team field places, but, uh, the majority of it, it is for athletics.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, okay, Mary?
Uh, does this include buses for like band competitions or anything like that? Or if they're, I know most of it's going for athletics, but would it also include band buses? Competitions?
Um, it depends on the competitions, uh, and what they, where they're going. So for example, like when Drumline went, um, that was an additional competition. So no, we, we reserved additional amount of money, um, a couple of years back to send them to their certain competitions. But I can get an outline of, um, what all of the teams are that use, uh, the busing contract within this, uh, not-to-exceed seventy-five thousand dollar limit, uh, and then break that down for the board.
Thank you.
Are there any comments or question? I actually have one question myself. Um, it says that the, the bids are per school bus, passenger school bus. Um, but it doesn't take into account time and whatnot, and other cases where there's like overtime if somebody has to, a bus driver has to work nine hours or something like that versus one hour.
There are time limits that the bus drivers actually can drive. And so in some cases, um, one bus may take you there and a different bus may take you home. But in most cases, we try to, uh, schedule the buses, uh, ahead of time so that the same bus that takes you there can bring you back. But there are, depending on some events, um, so for example, like really long track meets, uh, it would exceed the bus driver's limited amount of time to drive a bus.
Okay, I thought I saw Kiana Joe question?
Yes, thank you, President Smith. So in the instance that, um, we exceed the bus driver's amount of time, do we pay them overtime? Or is that, does that increase the cost of the bus at the, for our transportation costs?
So it, uh, we don't pay them overtime. We go through the busing company, and they have really, um, strict federal guidelines on the amount of time a bus driver can actually be on service. Um, because obviously you're transporting minors, you're transporting students, so safety is paramount in that regard too. So in some cases, there have been, um, there's been a double dispatch. So one bus takes you there, that bus then goes back or does a different route or completes whatever. And then another bus comes and gets you and, and brings the, the team or the, the competitive group back to campus. And it just depends on, um, bus drivers cannot exceed, even if you pay them extra, they cannot exceed the number of hours they are legally allowed to drive at one time.
Got it. And also I noticed that the bids noted that the passenger school bus holds up to fifty-six to eighty-four passengers. Um, I know that our school, however, because due to COVID protocols, we've limited to twenty students per bus. Is that our district's protocol or is that a state protocol? I was just curious.
There is no limitation any longer for social distancing on a bus. The only distance, the only COVID requirements on buses are masking and facing in the same direction. So if you're wearing your mask, you're kind of facing forward on that bus structure. And they are, there is recommendation that the windows be open, uh, just so that you have proper ventilation, proper airflow inside of the bus. There are no physical distancing requirements on buses. Uh, we do want to make sure that we're not overcrowding or overpacking buses wherever we, um, possibly, you know, wherever we can limit in terms of teams. Um, I know that some of your larger teams, like your track teams or your football team, it gets a little bit cumbersome. So, uh, we don't mind, um, making some allowances there, but there's not a limit to twenty. No, there's not a limit any longer to twenty.
Got it. Thank you, Dr. Ficker.
No problem.
I just wanna just chime in real quick that, you know, whenever we travel to another county, the protocols may be different. And, you know, a lot of efforts put in by our administrative team, our staff, to keep track of all these changes and possibly even the, the changes in other counties when our buses, let's say, were to visit, send our students to other counties.
Good point. Thank you. Okay, I am gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Uh, student board member Lee?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I M E S, uh, member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And member Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to the area of personnel services, uh, item twenty-eight calls for motion to approve the TCU SD school calendar for two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four. I have a motion and a second to approve, please. A motion from member Georgino, and a second from, um, member Espinoza. And, uh, I think it's pretty straightforward, but are there any comments or questions? No? Okay, then I will go ahead and call for the vote. Uh, student board member Lee?
Yes.
Uh, member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
And I M E S, so the motion carries five zero. Moving on to item twenty-nine, calls for a motion to approve the TCEA memorandum of understanding for in-person learning. May I have a motion and a second to approve, please? Uh, boy, it was a quick one. I think it was, remember Sneed got the motion, then member Georgino got the second, and member Espinoza was right behind. Oh, I gotta write that down before I forget. Okay, um, comments or questions on this? No? And I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Student board member Lee?
Yes.
Uh, member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
Uh, I M E S and member Sneed?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion care, uh, carries five zero. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item thirty, this is a motion to approve the TCEA MOU for the Virtual Learning Academy. So it's different than in-person training. May I have a motion and a second to approve, please? Motion from member Espinoza. And a second from member Georgino. And are there any comments or questions about this? No? And I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Student board member Lee?
Yes.
Uh, member Georgino?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
Uh, I M E S, member Sneed?
Yes.
And member Espinoza?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carries five zero. Onto item thirty-one, which calls for a motion to approve the SEAs, one-on-five memorandum of understanding. May I have a motion and a second to approve this, please? Motion from member Lynn and second from member Georgino. Any comments or questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Student board member Lee?
Yes.
Okay, member Lynn?
Yes.
I M E S, member Sneed?
Yes.
Uh, member Espinoza?
Yes.
And member Georgino?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries five zero. Thank you. Um, moving on to item thirty-two, it calls for a motion to approve the CSE eight twenty-three memorandum of understanding. May I have a motion and a second to approve, please? A motion from member Sneed and a second from member Lynn. Uh, are there any comments or questions on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Student member Lee, preferential vote?
Yes.
Okay, um, hold on. My sticky was stuck. Uh, I M E S, uh, member Sneed?
Yes.
Uh, member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Georgino?
Yes.
And member Lynn?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to item thirty-three, calls for a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the San Gabriel Unified School District and TCU SD San Gabriel Valley Consortium Teacher Induction Program. May I have a motion and a second, please? and T C U S D San Gabriel Valley Consortium Teacher Induction Program. May I have a motion and a second, please, on this? Motion from member Georgina. And a second from member Lynn. And. Are there any comments or questions on this? Should we ask for a quick over, Mary?
Can I ask? Tamara to just explain, is this? Is this the student teacher program or is this? What exactly are we talking about here?
It's basically the, it's not the student teacher one, it's the induction program. So we're in a consortium with the San Gabriel Valley. There's a number of districts that are in there. So this is for our new teachers that are like probe one or probe two. It used to be called like the bits up program. That's what it is. So we assign mentors to them so that they are basically mentored and coached through the program. And this year we have two teachers that fall under that category.
And so we we resource this outside the district just because they they're more adept at addressing these issues on a bigger basis?
Yes, and there's collaboration across the board, which is really helpful too. So.
That's what I thought we were talking about here because I had served as a bits of mentor in the past and I knew it included.
Yeah.
Many districts within the consortium and. I had a feeling that's who we're talking about.
So. You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? No, seeing none, I will go ahead and call for the vote. Member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Georgina?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
And did I, did I skip Nicole? I'm Kiana, did I skip you?
Yes. Yes.
So sorry. First time in two or three meetings anyway. Okay, so yes for for Nicole and where are we? It's me. I I'm a yes also, so the motion carries five zero. So sorry, I pulled the sticky off too fast. We are on to item number 34, which calls for a motion to approve the position of registered nurse. The district may have a motion and a second to approve. A motion from member Georgina and a second from member Lynn. And maybe we should. Ask Tamara to give a brief summary of this one as well?
Sure. So last meeting, we approved, or it might have been two meetings ago, the coordinator of health position. That's a district position and that's Crystal's position that oversees all of the nurses. We have a large shortage right now across the board, across the state for nurses and we need site level R Ns that we currently don't have. The position that we currently have is a certificated R N position at the district level. This will be at the site level. So this will be a classified position. The, I just want to chime in too. The reason that we're looking for R Ns is that we have tried to fly several, several times for, to fill a position for our L V Ns. And so that was very important for our district to have L V Ns across our school campuses. And especially now during COVID, we know that that is most critical and we're very, very grateful that we have L V Ns there. However, because of the statewide shortage on L V Ns, we're not getting anybody in that interview process. So we have worked, Tamara and I have worked with Robin and C S E A 105. We came up with a strategy of trying to now cast the net for an R N classified position to actually sit at some of our larger school sites. So we do have a couple of leads where the the R Ns are available, where we we're just not able to get an L V N into the hiring pool. They are all in different clinics, especially as COVID clinics have increased, L V Ns have all been gobbled up. And so we do know that the governor has also set out some reserve emergency funds to pull in L V Ns from outside of the state of California. And that's just kind of speaking to the shortage. But we do believe that we could probably have some R Ns, success with getting R Ns into our district through this mechanism. And and Robin was in favor of that as well, so.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? I have one on, oh, go ahead, Kiana.
Thank you, President Smith. I just wanted to ask Dr. Ficker, do you plan, will this resolution have an R N sitting at each school site or the same one shared between all school sites?
So that's a great question. So right now we do have an L V N at all of the school sites. That would be their assignment. We have two school sites who have a sub L V N currently in there. And that those L V Ns were assigned to a student who is no longer in our district. They are, they're in the virtual academy. So but that is only a temporary fix. We do want to make sure we have a nurse at every school. So if we can't hire an L V N because they're not available, we are, we're hopeful that an R N could be hired and be placed at the school site. An R N is a higher level nurse. So we are going to be looking at placing that R N at the larger schools where the smaller schools would stay with their L V N.
Thank you, Dr. Ficker.
No problem.
Any other comments or questions? I I do have one. I don't know if I just never noticed this before or not, but it says salary and benefits as determined by classified study. So we don't know what that is yet, but we're being asked to prove the position without that information. Is that?
Yes, that is correct. We have a range in there only because we have to base it on the salary study that we just did. And that is completed, but we got to look across the board to see pretty much where that's going to land. So we did put a range, but we do not know exactly where that's going to land because it's got to also go through Personnel Commission. I was just gonna say, the board is the first stop shop, but then we have to actually submit this with the study to the Personnel Commission. And then they will make the final determination for the classified position.
And tomorrow, I don't see a range in the staff report anywhere unless I missed it.
I may have been looking at the other one.
Yeah, the other one has a range.
Right, you're right, you're right. This one doesn't. Yes, because it has to be based on that. Yeah. So my apologies. I was looking at the next one, the the.
You're fine.
So as soon as we have that, because it'll go to the next Personnel Commission, we can get you guys that information for sure. But the Personnel Commission will set the range.
Hey, what if it comes back where it's really a lot more than we want to spend? Do we?
Then we are in trouble.
Yeah.
We are out of luck. So no, the first, the first stop shop here is just to get the, the opportunity to have this position within our district available, and that would be the Board of Education. And then tomorrow we'll take that with Juris, who's the director of the Personnel Commission. And then they will complete that and approve that finally in there for the classified union, since it is a union position.
Okay, thank you.
I I think this, this position is very timely. I think it's very appropriate. We have to move very quickly as well. Especially one of the essential duties, one of the last items on the job description talks about contact tracing and reaching out quarantine, making sure kids are quarantined appropriately and making sure that the data is reflected on dashboard. These are all essential duties that will benefit the whole district and the community.
All right, good point. Thank you, Mike. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Student Board Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Georgina?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
I M E S and members Sneed?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries five zero. Thank you. Moving on to item 33, calls for a motion to approve the position of communications specialist. And this would be a certificated management position.
It's 35.
What did I say?
Thirty-three.
Oh, I don't know why I said that. Thirty-five, you're right. Sometimes the words come out of my mouth, just don't make sense to me either. Okay, so item 35, which calls for the motion to approve the position of communications specialist. May I have a motion and a second, please? Member, motion from member Lynn, second from member Espinoza. Are there any comments or questions on this? It was pretty detailed. Staff report. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call for the vote. Student Board Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Georgina?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
I M E S, members Sneed? Members Sneed?
Yes.
And member Espinoza?
Yes.
Okay, so that motion carries five zero. With that, we are on to our consent agenda, which includes routine items approved by one motion and one vote. Unless a member of the board or audience requests that any item be reviewed and voted upon separately. So may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda in whole, or if somebody needs to pull something, let me, let us know. Donna, is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and a second from, I thought it's a member Espinoza. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will go ahead and call for the vote. Student Board Member Lee?
Yes.
Member Lynn?
Yes.
I M E S, members Sneed?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
And member Georgina?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion carries five zero. With that, we are on to board requests or comments. Anybody have anything they want to bring up? Melissa?
Just going back to the Booster Club handbook that we just approved. I just wanted to make sure my understanding was correct, that compliance with the, the requirements in terms of like your board positions. There's time for people to come into compliance, meaning that when it's time to elect a new board for the following year is when these rules have to be applied. It's not effective immediately.
Yeah, yeah, if I can jump in. Yes, there, there will be plenty of time. They've already had their elections, I would think, back in either April or May, whenever they do that. This, this is just serves to help guide that booster club in making sure that they, they know the rules or they, they have resources. And then they also have a district person here to work with them to assist them at any point in time. So yes, they, we have this entire year to go through that application process and go through some training with them and then go into their elections, which should be April, May of next year.
Thank you.
Any other comments anybody wants to make? No? Then we'll move on to future agenda items. We just have one visual performing arts presentation. Is there anything else anybody would like to maybe include for future? No? Okay. Then with that, I will go ahead and call for, oh, nope. Any additional comments and agendas and non-agendized items? And I haven't received any. I will go ahead and call for a motion to adjourn. May I have a motion and a second, please? Motion from member Sneed, second from member Lynn. And we'll start with the student board member Lee, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. I M E S, member Sneed?
Yes.
Member Espinoza?
Yes.
Member Georgina?
Yes.
And Dr. Lynn, you get the final word in tonight.
Yes.
I think we are now adjourned. Everyone have a great evening and enjoy whatever time you have to eat.
Have a nice evening, guys. Thank you.